This is City of Abingdon, Georgia Board of Mayor Commissioners. It is March thirteenth. This is our regular meeting. It is five thirty. I like to call the meeting to order. We have an agenda before us. Do you have a motion to adopt?
Some.
That was Lisa. Do I have a second?
Second.
That was Graham. I've ever say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner comments. We'll start with Mayor for team.
Oh, okay. So as I have been doing, following along with Georgia State Legislature's different bills that are getting presented and what made crossover day, et cetera. And I just wanted to say a couple of talk about a couple of little things that is good for cities. They are good for cities in general and also GMA, Georgia Municipal Association has been supportive or neutral on these. One is that the amended state budget passed. So that means we're getting more money in road funding. Or make funding, almost double. Yeah. So next year. Yep. So or this this year. Yeah. And then there's also additional money for water and sewer and work workforce housing. But those things, I'm not sure how much those will play into our particular situation. Also, there's these bills that made it through crossover day and would potentially in some ways be good for us. One is an increase from one hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand is the threshold for requiring a public bidding process on projects. So that is something Georgia Municipal Association supported. It's easier and more efficient for cities. A possible expansion of the rural zone tax credit. Mandatory floating homestead exemption with a three percent cap. And mandatory reevaluation of parcels every three years for tax purposes. So anyway, just wanted to update folks on that. Not those are the last ones I mentioned haven't passed yet. I mean, we aren't done yet, but they're looking good. So these are my comments.
Thank you. Just remember that. I don't have too much to say. I just wanted to let everybody know that I won't be here for the State of the City next week. I'll be going to Tifton for the Georgia Municipal Association training. So I'll miss you all, but I know it'll be great. And I'll tune in on Zoom if we're gonna live stream it. If not, I'll catch the recording later. And secondly, I don't have a second.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah. Well, this is actually very timely. My remarks were going to kind of center around supporting our various businesses downtown. This is the first time I've seen this this little app thing. So this is brand new?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I ate lunch downtown, met with some local business owners. I just want to thank all they do for our city. Give us things to do, places to eat, and I encourage everyone within the city to support all our businesses within the city. With the construction that's coming, they are, there are going to be some negative impacts because of all the all the traffic from the construction. And I, it's all the more reason to make sure we're intentional about supporting our local business owners and making sure that we support them through this process. So when everything is nice and new and bright and shiny, that they are still successful and ready to open their doors when when the when the streets is. So thank you, everybody.
Commissioner Rock?
I'm kind of anything today except I'm glad to see everyone here. So thank you for coming and joining online.
Can I add one more thing to on Mike's comments? Just so folks know and be on the lookout, there will be some incentives coming from the Downtown Development Authority specifically targeted at our residents for those who frequently use our businesses as a sort of a way to encourage folks to continuously keep visiting. So just be on the lookout for that. So that's one thing the DDA is gonna do to try and help out.
Thank you. I have a question, actually. Do we have an updated map of Abingdell with the businesses and all that stuff? I've had a few requests over the last year. The last map we had is, I mean, it's still got coyotes down there where the Alexan is or the Willis. That was a wild pack. Yeah. So, okay, just that was a question. I really have no.
Where's that map at? Is it on the?
No, that map is not any good. I'll speak to.
Where's the new map?
There is no new map.
Okay.
However, the the business community and the city are in talks to produce a business guide which will include a map within it and, you know, other information relevant to the downtown business district.
Any ETA on?
No, this is an infancy project.
I haven't thought of working on an internal map that was just not quite there yet that'll need the mayor to meet.
And actually, I think a couple of people have been realtors because they'd just like to have mud on the table. Here's, you know, blah, blah, blah. Here's all the stuff, just so, you know, people realize what all is here. Anyway. Okay, thank you. I just hope everybody's enjoying the springish weather before the bugs and the pollen and the humidity arrives. So enjoy that while you can. I know I do, but anyway. Mr. Manager?
Yes. Lots of things to touch on. Let's begin with the Explorer Abingdell Mobile Pass. You may recall, two Christmases ago, we debuted this concept, the Slay the Winter Fest Quest, whereby local businesses act as check-in points and also offer discounts to those who check in. And then, of course, if a person accumulates enough points from checking into multiple businesses, then they are eligible to receive prizes. This year's pass has thirty-two participating businesses. It's it's easy to use. You can download the free pass onto your phone. It geo-locates you. So when you enter one of the participating businesses, you just click check in. And then we will have, you know, the opportunity again for discounts and specials, prize opportunities, and then quarterly drawings for gift certificates to those local businesses. As has also been stated, the State of the City is scheduled for next Thursday, March twenty-first at six P M. at Olive and Pine. Snacks and beverages from Lefty Lee's and the wonderful world of coffee and tea will be provided. We encourage everyone to explore all of the businesses operating in Olive and Pine at their open house during the event, including soon to open businesses, the commune high five listing room and wine bar and night owl, which will be a cocktail and late night snacks and food venture. So we're very excited about being able to showcase those businesses at our annual State of the City event. We also have some upcoming events at the Town Green. Mr. John's had to reschedule its free kids music class to ten A M. this Saturday, March the sixteenth. On Tuesday, March twenty, March twenty-sixth at six P M., Anarata Yoga will host free yoga at the Town Green stage thanks to the generous sponsorship of the Bost Homegrown Team. Unfortunately, we did not four-peat as the small town beer scene winner. We came in second. So hopefully that will act as motivation for us to reclaim the crown next year.
Who got it?
Cody, Wyoming. So, you know, the wonderful beer scene of Cody, Wyoming.
Don't know how many.
Also, want to remind everyone that their business licenses must be renewed during the month of March. We encourage businesses not to wait until the last moment to get those in for processing as that is difficult, more difficult for us to handle. And and also, thank you to Decaturish for graciously inviting me to participate on the Decatur Dish show in tandem with Atlanta News First yesterday. It was it was a great opportunity to let a greater audience know about all of the the activities that are going on in the city and the reason for those. You can watch that program either on Decaturish or YouTube. We are also posting links to it on our social media channel. So we encourage our residents and business owners to watch that. That's all I have. Let's let's get to business.
All righty then. All right.
Thank you. Yes.
Cody Wyoming.
Cody Wyoming.
All right. Do we have any meeting minutes? Okay, no meeting minutes to approve. All right. The first item of business is item number five. We have a force to contract for solid waste and recycling collection. Just for permission purposes, that is with Arrow raced. Do you have a motion?
Some.
Do I have a second? Second. That was Lisa and Mike. Any comments or questions up here?
Yeah, I do. I do have some comments. I in the last meeting, I expressed, you know, that I thought the contract should be for less time, et cetera. I had some reservations about it. Nothing that that was a showstopper. I did talk with the city manager and he assured me that, you know, there will be measures of customer satisfaction, for lack of a better word, you know, as the job getting done to everyone's satisfaction, which was a major concern of mine. And, you know, I think the reason I want to make a comment is because this is one of the tougher decisions that I've made since being part of the board. And the reason is that it's, you know, pitting a couple of things important to me with each other. One is, you know, people, I'm a people person and in management, you know, managing people is a thing. But it also brings forth some financial consideration. The gains to residents per household, I don't remember the exact number. It's not huge, but it is something. In this case, you know, as difficult as it was for me to make this decision, I do believe the financials are what are better for the city. It's a financially sound plan. And I think, you know, it's a good way to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have comments, but my good friend.
You can go ahead.
Okay. So, yeah, I'll be voting to approve this contract. Most of the people I heard from or talked to were in favor of outsourcing. But I want to say that I do understand the feelings of those who were not in favor. I've had some of the same apprehensive feelings myself. Change is hard. It can be scary, but it can also be healthy. And ultimately, I think this change will be healthy for our city. The fact is, we cannot do sanitation pickup as economically as a private company. I'm happy we'll be saving residents some money. I'm even more excited about the possibility of our Public Works Department having time to attend to other projects and needs that they may not have been able to get to in the past. And I'm hoping to see less relative callouts and injuries with our Public Works associates with the new plan. I feel comfortable that risk has been mitigated with an escape clause. I'm optimistic the transition and continuing service will be smooth. And I'm happy to see provision for communication, reporting, and complaints. While I will miss the Public Works associates who may be leaving us, I'm relieved to know that they that there are employment opportunities for them. Lastly, I want to thank the city manager and the Public Works Director for their expertise and hours of work on this. I appreciate that they did not shy away from enacting change that they feel is best for our organization.
Thank you.
My comments will be brief. I just echo a lot of what Lisa said that, you know, and I've heard from a lot of people that are apprehensive about this change. But I really do have faith in the expertise of our city manager and our Public Works Director. And and I and I do wholeheartedly believe that this is the right path forward for the long term. And I'm, one argument that a lot of people says that they don't, they don't mind the couple of extra hundred bucks a year. And and I get it. For for some households, that's not a significant amount of money, but the bigger picture of that is, is that it brings us in line with what we should be paying for sanitation services. And instead of that cost increasing year over year, this is, this is kind of where we should be. And and I try to remember to think of it in an economy of scale, you know. If if we were a one-street city, you know, it just doesn't make sense for us to own our own garbage truck and to do all these things that that just pile up costs for a small, small population. And I'm 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 comfortable with this moving forward. And I have, like I told a resident the other day, you know, I have really no reason to believe that the company that we're contracting with is gonna do a poor job. They have every motivation to do a good job for us. And I'm very comfortable with with the checks and balances we have in place to make sure that it's maintained and that it goes smoothly. And I, you know, and I'm trying to tell people that, you know, I don't think this is gonna hurt as much as you think it is. This is gonna be okay. So I'm 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 in favor of it as well.
Commissioner Smith? Yeah, I think that and I'll be voting in favor of the change as well. I think a big thing to remember is that a lot of the changes that were proposed and are proposed to be adopted were made with consultation of the Public Works Department themselves. And most of my feedback from residents was concerned for the employees. It looks like, you know, we're going to retain a significant amount. And then others will be offered employee employment opportunities with Arrow. So those those workers are not gonna be, you know, left out in the cold, so to speak. So I'm comfortable with that. That's a great way to, I think, the the city manager and the city and the Public Works Department made any effort that they could, every effort that they could to to make sure that everyone was was taken care of the best way possible. And to echo Graham, a lot of concerns about perceived changes with the Public Works coupled with, you know, a savings that wasn't significant to them. I'll echo that. Two, three hundred dollars for a lot of households is a lot of money. And another thing to remember is that's just for year one. And so costs that would be born over over time would most likely become more significant with, you know, vehicle replacement or just other unforeseen costs. And it's, it's, I think it's great that another company will have to undergo those costs going forward. So I think that's overall a good, good thing now for the city. So.
Well, thank you. You know, I just feel like the hallmark of any good organizations, you're constantly trying to improve. Hopefully it's incremental. Sometimes it's a little bigger. That doesn't mean we have to turn over every rock every year, but I do just want to say good job, you know. I think we're, and that's no commentary on how it's been before. Since I think we always have to be looking for better ways to do stuff, especially with the city of our sides. We don't have a lot of cush, as they say. So I think we have to stay lean. But that said, that's all the comments I have. Any others up here? Any questions, comments out there? Yes, ma'am.
I do. I'm Beth Fisher, at Fifty Berkeley Road. Obviously, you know, I'm opposed to this. And I just feel as though some of the city employees have been thrown under the bus, sanitation employees. That's my personal feeling. I think other people feel that way also. But I am concerned also, and I don't know what your escape clause is, that hasn't been divulged or talked about in the public. I also am concerned about after a contract is finished and you renegotiate, how much of a piece want to go up? Is there a percentage that you have capped on that? And if we don't want to use one of their Kirby Kirby's and only have a little bit of garbage and we put our little individual bag on the corner and them still pick it up. There's a lot of things that haven't been made public that I think those of us who oppose might feel better about if we could discuss it.
You you mentioned escape clause. What did you mean by that?
Well, I mean, if we're not happy, we, meaning you that sit up there and a lot of residents are complaining and the services aren't being provided the way supposedly there to be provided, provided, is there an escape clause to dissolve the contract?
My second question is, why do you think we're potty that or something? You said.
I said I haven't heard it. I don't know.
Okay, okay.
We did discuss that in a public meeting. The city manager brought it up, termination for cause. It's right here in the contract.
Okay.
That has been discussed. In the event of an alleged material breach of this agreement by contractor, the city shall provide written notice of such breach to the contractor to be delivered, you know, it's all legalese. But, yeah, we have the ability to get out of the contract. And and we have discussed it. And just just want to be clear about that because it's not something we've hidden and.
I wasn't accusing y'all.
I just, I didn't understand. That's all I was asking, really. Ms. Manager, anything else?
I would just like to let Ms. Fisher know the contract is online. It's included in the agenda packet. So if you if you want to go read it, you can.
And as for the back, just a bag of trash on the curb, I've done that before, too. I don't think I asked that specific question, but I did ask a question about, you know, if you have more than fits in your can, can we just put it on the side? And yeah, no problem. And and we do have that transition period, sixty days. Is that right, Patrick?
Yes, over the next sixty days.
Questions like that will be.
Well, Marcel and I will be working with Arrow to develop the logistics of the service, meaning routes, days routes will occur, how we're gonna handle the condominiums, you know, when we're gonna schedule the delivery of bins.
Okay.
Getting all of the employees who decide to to consider implementing with Arrow, onboarded with Arrow and trained. So all of those things will take place in the next sixty days. I want to address a couple of questions. The answer to your question, Ms. Fisher, is no. You will have to use the bin provided by Arrow, which will be provided to you for free. However, if if your trash overflows that bin, then you will have two options. You can either, you know, place the trash on top of or near the bin or Arrow will also provide an opportunity for all properties to directly contract additional bins through them for a reduced cost. So that's how that's how they'll handle it. But yes, the trash will have to be placed in that receptacle. Otherwise, we're presenting some some significant liability. One of the things we're trying to get away from is people handling trash bags. That presents a whole host of problems. I think, you know, we we talked about those in public over the past year or so. But our current sanitation division encounters a lot of hazardous material by picking up individual trash bags. A lot of times those trash bags aren't sealed appropriately. So they, you know, there are encounters with, you know, not only just household waste, but, you know, old medications, dog fecal matter, that kind of stuff. So that is a, that is a tremendous liability for the city to incur. So we're trying to move away from that liability as well. So, you know, we're, we're, it won't be an individual trash bag type of handling. It will be guys who actually lift the can, place it onto the truck and then dump it into the truck.
When I was here and the gentleman from Arrow was making his presentation and he showed the sizes of the bins.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't know which size is gonna be used for recycling and which is gonna be garbage. There's those of us, not me, but there are others who will have difficulty getting any, anything down a hill or particularly something that is large and not manageable. So what size are?
Yeah, so so the sizes of the receptacles are standard. The trash is a ninety-five gallon. The recycling is a thirty-three gallon. They're both on wheels. Now, for those persons who are physically incapable of moving the bins down to the end of their curb, there will be a medical waiver and Arrow will will provide what we call side door service. So they don't go into gates, but they would go to the side of the house and retrieve the bin from the side of the house for people who can't bring it to the curb.
Yes, Martha.
Yeah, Marissa McDermott, Six Kingston Road. That's covered most of what I was gonna ask, but we can't use a smaller bin. Is that right? It has to be a big, big one. Okay, a lot of us don't need a big one. And it's just, I think the city's gonna be ugly. But that's just the way it is. I just wanted to put in my two cents.
Yeah, because it's flip-flop as far as size for a lot of us is, of what household garbage could be compared to recycled garbage. So.
Okay, thank you.
You know, one thing I'd like to point out is I think we're actually gonna have less days of garbage cans on the curb.
Yes.
So that's just.
Because it won't be two days.
Yeah. So, yeah.
It'll be just one day.
So just just something to point out there.
Are there any questions or what?
No. John has.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I just, John, myself, thirty-three oh two, I'm in drought. I just, I walk my dog every morning about seven thirty. And I see on Wednesday, I see these big garbage, big recycling bins. People have, Amazon does a great business this time. There's stacks of cardboard beside those. What's gonna happen? Are they gonna be able to still do that? If not, it's gonna be a real problem.
So the bins now are a little less than half the size of the bins that will be received.
That's gonna be a problem. I assure you, that's gonna be a cost. You can, it doesn't take many cardboard boxes to fill up one of those things. So I'm just saying what I observed when I walked around. I think to me, they are flipping. I think the garbage should be the smaller one and then recycling the large. But we'll see. You'll find out.
Patrick, didn't they say that, like, I I've I've wondered about the same thing because we have a very large recycle bin. I do think we all need to relook at what is actually recyclable. Many of us are putting things in our recycle bin that actually probably aren't supposed to go in there. But secondly is, they did say that on occasion, if you have to stack something like boxes on top of the bin, that that would be fine. So you could put your recycle bin out and stack, you know, your folded boxes, your broken down boxes on top of it and they will take it. It's not, it's not like they won't take it. That's what they said.
We'll see.
We'll see.
Okay. All right. Any comments? Other?
No.
Okay, seeing that, I'd like to bring back for a vote. All of them say aye.
Aye.
That's five. Okay. All right, next up, item number six. Gosh, we have a long time. Okay, after we do. All right, we have a force of resolution of the City of Abingdell State's Board of Mayor Commissioners declaring the results of a election determining the issuance or non-issuance of general obligation debt by the City of Abingdell State's Georgia, the imposition of a one percent special purpose local option sales tax and continued suspension of the homestead option sales and use tax and the levy of the equalized homestead option sales and use tax and for other related purposes. Of the equalized homestead option sales and use tax and for other related purposes. Do I have a motion to adopt? So move. That was Ronald. Do I have a second? Second, that was Mike. Uh.
Yes, can we briefly? Yeah, so in order for us to receive S B O S funding, we have to certify the election uh for S B O S. Out of the Avondale Estates precinct. Uh so that's exactly what we're doing here.
Yes, okay. Uh questions, concerns up here? I think we are most possible.
Yes, just happy it passed.
Yes, uh questions, concerns out there? No, no, no. Okay, let me bring back for a vote. All the papers say aye. That's five. Moving. Okay, uh number seven. We have before us a software as a service agreement. That agreement, just by the way, is with B S and A Software LLC. Uh do I have a motion to adopt? Some of that was going on second.
Second.
That was Lisa. Mr. Manager?
Yes, uh so in order um for us to uh to uh. Excuse me. Our current financial software that is provided by a company named Sage is no longer supported by Sage. Uh the Sage software is also not really designed for government use. It's designed for business use. Uh so it is, given the fact that it is no longer being supported by the company. And the fact that the software package that the city has been using for um well over a decade now, actually. Uh is not necessarily uh fit for meeting our needs, especially given the fact that we are a multi-fund government. Organization. Uh we went on a quest for a software product that does meet our needs. Uh and so our finance director uh surveyed and demonstrated six different software programs. Uh narrowed that list down to three, obtained quotes from those three. And after the quotes were obtained, uh found that the best value uh for new software would be uh B S and A. Director Mona is also familiar with B S and A. It is a completely cloud-based product. It's uh we we um. Not only do we like the software, uh we also like the uh the team from B S and A. And we believe that they will provide us with the level of support that we need moving forward. And we are enthusiastically. Uh overjoyed to uh bring you this contract. Uh this item was budgeted as a part of the twenty-four, twenty-five capital program.
Okay.